Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Tuesday, February 16th City Council meeting via Zoom. Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Alderman Santee?
Here.
Alderman Glad?
Here.
Alderman Schaefer?
Here.
Alderman Harding? No? Alderman Mahavik?
Here.
Alderman Devine?
Here.
Alderwoman Miller?
Here.
Thank you. Please stand for the pledge. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. The republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all. All right. Is Harding on here yet? Let's see him. Let me try, if you don't mind, let me try calling him real quick just to. All right, he'll be joining us in about two minutes. We'll go ahead and get started on the consent agenda. But before that, public comment, is there anyone in the in the via Zoom here that would like to make a public comment that are not on that is items that are not on the agenda this evening? So anything that is not on the agenda, is there any public input or comments by the public? If so, please unmute yourself. See none? Moving on to consent agenda, items 5A through 5I. Is there any council members wanting to pull any items for separate consideration? See none? I'm looking for a motion to approve 5A through 5I as presented for consent agenda. Alderwoman Miller?
I'll make that motion to approve consent agenda 5A through I.
Thank you. Alderman Santee, for a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Discussion on these items? See none? Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Miller?
Yes.
Alderman Santee?
Yes.
Alderman Glad?
Yeah.
Alderman Schaefer?
Yes.
Alderman Mahavik?
Yes.
Alderman Devine?
Yes.
All right. Thank you, counsel. The next item on the agenda, we'll go ahead and start off discussion is 6A is discussion to approve the following. AA is an ordinance annexing approximately one acre located at 908 South Illinois Route 31 and 912 South Illinois Route 31 in McHenry. I'll go ahead and have Doug present this item. Doug, floor is yours.
Okay, um, do you want me to address all of them or just?
Um. We gotta vote on them separately, so if you want to present them all and then we'll just vote on them separately. That's fine.
Okay. So there, before you tonight, there's four parcels for consideration for annexation. The fire district parcel is being removed from the agenda tonight due to inadequate public notice. I inadvertently put the wrong legal description on the public notice. That is the 1004 South Route 31. Parcel, so that'll be brought back at a later date. But the other three parcels, two of them are vacant. Properties. The third one is consists of a law office and not an insurance office is, as it says in the supplement, is actually a single family house. So the, the law office is to the north and then the, the single family house is to the south on the property. And the law office is owned, oh, I think OV in the county, well, which just means it has a variance on attached to it. And then the single family house is actually B1V business with a variance. And then the other two parcels, the one directly to the south of the, the one I just described is Stan Yankovic. That is zoned A1 in the county. That is vacant and then to the south of that is the fire district one and to the south of that is, is a parcel is vacant. Is actually zoned A1 in the county. And those are the ones for considerations evening.
Thank you, Doug. So we'll go ahead and start discussion off with 6AA. Annoising approximately one acre located at 908 South Illinois Route 31 and 912 South Illinois Route 31 in McHenry. Any discussion on this piece of property getting annexed in? See nothing from counsel. 6AB, an ordinance annexing approximately 7.76 acres located east of Illinois Route 31 and south of Shamrock Lane in McHenry. Any comments, questions regarding this item? Alderman Santee?
Just to confirm with, with Doug, is, is this the property owned by, is it Stan Kavitch? Is that correct?
No, the one owned by Stan Kavitch is the one directly south of the the next Tarage parcel.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions regarding this item? See none? 6AC, an ordinance annexing approximately 3.9 acres located east of Illinois Route 31 and south of Bull Valley Road in McHenry, Illinois. Any questions, comments regarding this item? All right, I'm going to open it up for public input, comments for any of these three annexations. Anyone in the public that would like to make a public comment or getting, get any feedback, please take the time to unmute yourself now and the floor will be yours. One more time for 6A through, 6AA through 6AC. Last chance for public input regarding these items. Okay. All right, at this time, I'm going to turn it over to counsel. I am looking for a motion and a second to approve 6AA as presented, which is an ordinance annexing approximately one acre located at 908 South Illinois Route 31 and 912 South Illinois Route 31 in McHenry.
Can I just make a comment, Mayor?
Yeah.
That parcel will have to be rezoned. It'll have to go through planning and zoning, so that'll, that'll happen afterwards.
Thank you. All right, so a motion and a second? Alderman Santee? Did he go?
Yes, I did. I will make the motion to approve item 6A annexation of 908 South Illinois 31 and 912 South Route 31 in McHenry as presented.
Thank you, Alderman Santee. Second, Alderwoman Miller?
I'll second that motion.
Thank you. Discussion on this item by counsel? Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Santee?
Yes.
Alderwoman Miller?
Yes.
Alderman Devine?
Yes.
Alderman Mahavik?
Yes.
Harding?
Yes.
Alderman Schaefer?
Yes.
Alderman Glad?
Yeah.
Mayor Judd?
Yes. Next item is 6AB is an ordinance annexing approximately 7.76 acres located east of Illinois Route 31 and south of Shamrock Lane in McHenry. Looking for a motion and a second for 6AB as presented. Alderwoman Miller?
I'll make the motion to approve the annexation of 6AB annexing approximately 7.76 acres located east of Illinois Route 31 of our claim in McHenry, Illinois.
Thank you. Second? Alderman Harding?
I'll second that motion.
Thank you. Discussion by counsel? Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Miller?
Yes.
Alderman Harding?
Yes.
Alderman Schaefer?
Yes.
Alderman Glad?
Yeah.
Alderman Santee?
Yes.
Alderman Mahavik?
Yes.
Alderman Devine?
Yes.
Mayor Judd?
Yes. Next item on the agenda is 6AC is an ordinance annexing approximately 3.9 acres located east of Illinois Route 31 and south of Bull Valley Road in McHenry. I'm looking for a motion and a second by counsel. Alderman Harding?
I'll make a motion.
Thank you. Second, Alderman Santee?
I'll second the motion.
Thank you. Discussion by counsel? Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Hardy?
Yes.
Alderman Santee?
Yes.
Alderman Glad?
Yeah.
Alderman Schaefer?
Yes.
Alderman Mahavik?
Yes.
Alderman Devine?
Yes.
Alderwoman Miller?
Yes.
Mayor Judd?
Yes. I think counsel, next item on the agenda is a discussion item. 7A is a Lafarge update by Randy Willie regarding the status of the gravel pit. Randy, I see that you're on here. How you doing?
I am. How are you, Mayor Judd?
Very good, very good. The floor is yours.
Okay, uh, I think Ross was going to put up.
Yeah, hold on, Randy, let me, let me get this. So just real quick, part of, if counsel remembers, and part of the agreement with Lafarge is to have an annual update on the status of the pit. So Randy is here this evening to give us the update. And if I can get this, can you see this?
That sounds like a winner there.
Can you guys see that?
Looks awesome.
Looks good.
So Randy, go ahead and
Very, very good. Sure, thank you, Ross, and good evening, Mayor Judd, council members, city staff, and members of the audience. I'm Randy Willie, I'm the regional manager for Land and Environment for Lafarge, who is doing business as Meyer Material Company at the west end of town, what we call the McHenry Santa gravel operation. And as Ross referred to, we're required, under our amended ordinance, to do a revised mine plan review with the council every year. So we'll go to the next slide. I know most of you are familiar with the property. You probably got a tab down, Ross, because there's a couple of bullet points there that we can add as we go along. Just a brief history on the ownership of the mine. Meyer Material Company acquired the mine from the Miller family back in 1988. Several of the Miller family members stayed on up until about 2018. In the mid 2000s, we were sold by our private family we were owned by and we were acquired by Aggregate Industries, who was a division of wholesome out of Switzerland. And then the recession hit and the housing market capitulated and ultimately wholesome out of Switzerland merged with a company called Lafarge out of Paris. And we've been Lafarge Wholesome as the global entity since 2015. The picture you're looking at, there is the entire mine, which stretches on both sides of Route 120, but what we're talking about tonight is the south pit, which is under a separate annexation and conditional land use permit as the north pit. And two years ago, we amended it to extend the terms until 2026. That includes hours of operation, which were changed out in the field. There are setback limits that comply with the city ordinances for all mines. And again, this is the mine plan review that was required by those, by those ordinance amendments. Next slide, Ross. And again, there's some bullet points on the side, so I'm drilling down to the area where most of the mine activity is taking place in the last seven or eight years, which is the, the final phase that basically has the Burning Tree subdivision along the south property line, the Woods Creek subdivision and Glacier Ridge subdivisions along the east property line. And probably what's most important here is that little square up in the corner, I'm going to refer to in a little bit, that is a 10 acre wooded section that was deeded by the Miller family to the HOA for Glacier Ridge. So that was not to be mined, that is their property. So we are working around that knob as we complete our extraction. The amended city ordinance, as I said, we are field crushing hours, which is directly in front of this, this picture here, is from 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM, Monday through Friday. We can also operate from 7:00 AM to 3:00 PM on Saturday. The original loading area, which is north of this photo, is where we load the trucks and that's 5:00 AM to 8:00 PM, although we don't really run past 4:00 PM on any given day. We can run the wash plant 24 hours a day, but again, I think that's weather permitting too. And again, there's setback zones along each of the property boundaries that we've stayed in compliance with. The north mine, which is not pictured here, is, is over by the cemetery up by, I call it Thatcher Meadow subdivision. That has a separate CUP, which will expire in about a year and a half. The next slide. So we're kind of drilling down a little bit more towards this corner. So two years ago, when we amended the annexation and CUP, we established what we thought was a footprint of this cell sequencing to mine above and below water to complete the south pit. So the red lettering A, B, C, D, E is what we called the dry mining phase, which is what we're still in. And that is taking material from just below the overburden layer down about 50 feet to just above the water table. And then the remainder based on the borings we have would be taken out as a wet mining phases, which is, you can see the U, V, W, X, Y, Z, subject to change depending on the glacial deposits. But ultimately, that was our, our mine plan going into 2019. And you can see this photo was dated May 7th of 2019. We had completed cell A and we were scratching into cell B pretty good at that point in time. Next slide. So this was where we thought we were going to get to during the 2020 mining season. So a year ago, we used this exhibit during this presentation to show where we thought we were going to mine. The areas in yellow would have been the dry mine areas, which we thought we would have taken all of the material west of the woods. So I'm going to go back to that square up there. And then we were going to continue through the remainder of cell C and get about halfway across the woods towards the Glacier Ridge subdivision. Also, the blue area down at the bottom was an estimate of how big the lake would be by the end of 2020. I can tell you that both the yellow area and the blue area, we did not accomplish what we had planned. Whether it was COVID or whether it was the product mix or competition, we did a good chunk of the dry mining. We fell a little bit short. We're right at the opening of the woods and I'll explain that on the next slide, but the underwater mining, we slowed down on because the way the mine is setting up, probably in the next year and a half, will probably be done dry mining and that's where most of the coarse aggregate is. So the mine is going to convert into a much finer material mine for the balance. And in order to mine efficiently, you'll want to feed the plant an equal amount of coarse and fine material. And the only way we were going to do that with the current plant configuration was continue to dry mine more than wet mine. Next slide, please. So this is zooming in, this is at the corner of the woods and those black contours are really what, this was taken, a photo taken in December of last year. So what we're, we're planning now is what we're going to do in 2021 with the remaining dirt that we need to strip. And this is probably the key slide because this is going to impact our neighbors the most, probably going into late this year and early in 2022. So if you follow the bullet points, I put down, you know, stripping overburden material will be deposited along the west and south boundaries along the 10 acre wooded area. So we plan on taking the strippings from this coming spring and placing it on the west edge of the woods to start building that slope. The overall plan is to complete the west high wall slope during the first half of 2021. We are allowed to strip before Memorial Day and after Labor Day for our agreement. And then the south high wall slope requirements would be made during the second half of 2021 after Labor Day. Because there is additional material we need to uncover, which is actually the last year we'll have to strip. So we're going to build the west slopes of the woods in spring and the south slopes of the woods in fall. So as we mine in the fall of 2021, we will create a slot along the south end of the woods and we'll be filling that as we mine. My last bullet point is the mining distance from Glacier Ridge neighbors will decrease. So we are going to get significantly close to the neighbors over the course of this year and probably early next year before we complete dry mining. So we can go to the next slide and I'll kind of show you the next, the last two phases here of what 2021 looked like. So there is only about nine to 10 acres left that needs to be stripped and we're planning to strip it all this year unless the economy and other indicators don't pan out. So the first half is phase one. We plan on moving about 100,000 yards of the strippings off of that last remaining farm field and hauling it over to build the slopes on the west side of the woods. We're going to high grade the material because we need as much course as we can to get through the plant to meet the demands for 2021. So you'll see an orange oval there that talks about an estimated stockpile of material. When I say high grade, we're going to take everything that's half inch and larger minus some fines that get along with it and move that along to the plant because right now our sand inventories are adequate. So we're going to keep, I'll call it the lower grade materials on an orange stockpile sitting there over the course of 2021. We'll go to the final slide now, Ross. And, and this will show you the, the last frontier of stripping, which is right up against the berm that we built against Glacier Ridge. Those materials will be stripped in the fall and deposited along the south side of the woods where we have just mined in spring. And that will hopefully seal off the wooded area. So what would be left is an open area that needs to be filled in 2022 along the Glacier Ridge residence. And then we would probably final grade everything from Glacier Ridge down to Wood Creek into that corner and around the corner between 2022 and 2023. And we're on track, I, I would say, to be done with, called the dry mining phase, where we have a primary field crusher out there. We could be done as early as the 4th of July in 2022, depending on the economy and how the deposit goes. But that, that's the snapshot that we're at today as far as how we're planning our stripping crews. And again, there still will be activity after we're done extracting because we have to finish the slope building when we're done with phase two. And there will be heavy equipment required to take down the berms that are along that perimeter of Glacier Ridge in order to find grade and vegetate the slopes that we're required to make. That in a nutshell is everything that we have on the books for this year. I will add, as long as I have your attention, that we are working with the public works department on another material allowance for this year. We reset the numbers and we're going to redo it all over again, so we have an allowance of material at their disposal. I also understand that there might be some competition moving into town and I've heard not only rumors, but straight from the straight from the potential petitioner. And all we're asking for is that, you know, we, we get the same level playing field if, if they are to be brought into, into town to compete with us. And in closing, I'd say if, if there's any opportunities, we can, as a company, offer some material donations or some volunteer labor for some projects. I think that's something we'd be trying to fit into our busy schedule while we're going through this year, but otherwise I'll leave it up to question.
Thank you, Randy. Appreciate it.
Yep.
I'm going to go ahead and stop sharing this. Couple of notes real quick from a staff standpoint. I just want to let counsel know that we actually received one phone call complaint this year. And that was about the access point to the pit on 120 and the amount of dust. So I did actually go out there and talk to the, the mine, mine boss, I don't know what you call him, Randy, but
Plant manager, yeah.
Plant manager and that he showed me the schedule for cleaning the road with the the machine. They, they contract out three, two to three times a week and have 120 clean, so they were on schedule. Just maybe happened to be a drier day or whatnot, but that was the only call I received. Nothing in relation to dust around the neighborhoods or noise this year, so I'm happy to, to say that Randy, I think, has, has done, held his end of the deal when it comes to, to those things, so. And we also, from a financial standpoint, have collected everything that we are, that they are required to submit to us to this point, so. Other than that, I guess if counsel has any questions for Randy or myself, we're here.
Any questions by counsel regarding the gravel pit? Alderman Schaefer?
Yes, thanks, Mayor. Hi, Randy. Just a couple of questions. The, one of the things that came up to me this year, and I actually talked with Ross about it, I think during the, the summer season, was it appeared that there was an increase in the volume of trucks this season. Do you guys count vehicles or do you just do weight?
Well, ultimately.
Do you have, do you have a number of vehicles that you count from time to time or no?
I would say no. You know, we issue tickets because there's some weather dependency to how busy we are from one week to the next. Depending on where the jobs are, if there's a job that's close by and it's a short haul, you're probably going to see two trucks make six trips pretty quick, as opposed to hauling it 20 miles away. So we don't do any traffic counts, so to speak. I, I do know that we did end the year actually okay and actually most of our operations did okay despite COVID and despite all the precautions that we had to have for our, you know, employees being an essential business to stay open. We, we did salvage the year, but I can tell you for, for a couple of months, it was very, very dire. But we do not do like a, like a day by day truck count. We would have to look at tickets, you know, just based on how many tickets the way master would send out in a day.
Do you guys know in advance when you're, like, for example, you had a lot coming in for that O'Hare job this last season? Is that correct?
That was, I can, I, I know for a fact that there was an O'Hare job with Ozinga's concrete plant down near O'Hare that they had to stay open longer hours and were kind of shipping concrete around the clock. So if there was additional truck traffic, it might have been in April or May. There was a couple of dates where they really couldn't stop pouring. But outside of that, I don't recall hearing anything. My office isn't there anymore to know that there wasn't, you know, a lot more traffic than usual. Now, we still have, Ozinga has truck traffic, Kern has truck traffic. And I do know that there was a lot of work being done at the subdivision across the street of, on, from 120, they were redoing some of the entrance ways and I think there was road widening for a turn lane up there, so there was probably a lot of truck traffic up there last year, so.
But do you, do you know in advance, like, when there's, at some of these big contracts, when you guys are going to play in it and what pits will be utilized? Because most of this stuff is contracts that are agreed to in advance, so do you know when those are going to hit?
Our, our salespeople would probably have a good idea if it was a big job. I think day in and day out, we can see different flows, but if there's big jobs, they'll probably get some heads up as to how much. Heads up as to how much material, because again, we have to have the inventory available. For those jobs. So the sales guy obvious has to, you know, it's kind of a. Chess game for him to make sure that there's enough inventories or he doesn't oversell a certain product. That's already been promised to a job. Not everything is by contract though. But I would say the bigger work is definitely stuff that we keep an eye on and probably have a better feel for. You know, when it's going to go, if it's going to go in May versus June versus July, but then each month is probably more. Weather dependent, uh, certain days you might get a lot. Out, but then the next two days it rains. So then you gotta wait for things to dry out. So.
And then one last question, did because of the um. Not finishing what you wanted to do in 2020, does that mean everything's moved back a year? Or it just is something you can get more done and completed depending on weather again?
Uh, I, I'm going to tell you that because we don't have that crystal ball that says what the economy is going to be like and. Which yards are going to take? The amount of material, I, I can tell you that. We had planned that we thought we were going to mine all the way through cell C last year. Now, there's a lot of variables that could have determined why. Uh, the geology, the product mix, when demand hit. Because again, we can only strip in spring and fall. So there might've been a reason that we maybe. Shipped out of Algonquin or Harvard or somewhere, maybe on a job. Just because if we couldn't strip until the following spring, we wanted to leave enough on the ground for winter work. It's, it's a puzzle. But uh, I, I'm going to tell you that our dry bank material is going to be done ahead of what we originally. Uh, thought when we were in front of the council a couple of years ago. Because we're pushing it. Uh, we're pushing to get all the course aggregate. Uh, out to the, the fixed plants that we have contracts with. And then ultimately I think they're going to probably refine the plant. So it's only going to be taking the smaller uh, stone and sands. Uh, for the, for the remainder. But as far as our deal with the amendment to the annexation agreement. Uh, we're right on schedule, uh, as far as getting all the material out of there.
Excellent. Appreciate your, your uh, answers. Thanks, Randy.
Yeah, okay, sure.
Uh, Alden Sandy.
Thank you, Mayor. Randy, thank you very much for the presentation. It's, it's good to get an update. I. Um, I think it's a useful tool just to see how the activity progresses in the mining section, especially on the southern section. You, you may, you had a statement, uh, the drive mining. Should be completed around July of 2022. Was that just in one uh, section? Of, of the mining area or was that in all of those? Uh, sections in the, I guess I would describe it as the southeastern area. Of uh, of your property?
I'll, I'll try to rephrase it for you. Um. I said maybe the earliest, I think right now, based on, yeah, what we think. We would be producing between this year and next. That it's possible by July of next year. That we could exhaust all the, the dry reserves that require that noisy crushing unit to be out in the field. And, and that's for everything on the south mine then. And I think because we were going to blend with the wet. Material and the dry at the same time, there's been a change in philosophy. About how to best utilize the, the material we have left. And that meant accelerating the dry probably a little bit faster. And so if, if, if it comes the way where. We think it is by the middle of next year or maybe by next fall in 2022. We may not have that field crusher out there. There will still be mining activity for the next couple of years because it's all wet mining. And it does require de-watering and handling. But you won't have that initial primary crusher that's taking the boulders.
Exactly what's done during a dry mining.
Which would be benefit to everybody.
Exactly, exactly. So, and, and probably the two key elements there in regards to predicting is. Uh, what your sales are like and whether permitting that you can mine, you know, to determine how many days.
Itself, I mean.
Then, okay.
As it is, nobody really knows until we get into it. We, we think it's a pretty uniform deposit. So we think we know what the yields are going to be out of it. So that's what I said.
And, and one more quick question. The number of, of mines that Lafarge has in the county that are, that are active?
Active today. We have Algonquin, McHenry. Uh, Marango is open for shipping. We just haven't produced, we didn't produce in 2020. I think I mentioned Harvard, but uh, there's a stockpile of material in Harvard, but. Uh, we load that out for Ozinga. They, they bought the stockpile. But we, we, we would have had a fourth one, but we haven't run Harvard in a pretty long time then.
All right. Thank you very much, Randy.
Any other questions by council? Seen them? All right, Randy, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thanks, Eric. Thank you, everyone. Bye bye.
All right. Next item on the agenda is seven B. It's all marine uh, retro rental expansion proposal. Bill Hobson, you want to go ahead and present this item?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I appreciate that. Uh, so I had an opportunity to meet with Michelle and Dylan Strite. Um, just after the first of the year to, to review how the season went, even though it was a, a really short season. Uh, we just approved this item last March, uh, this concept for us at Norpoint with the. The boat rentals and the, and the concessions that are down there. Um, with everything that happened and the, the mitigations and everything that was put in place. Uh, they were finally able to open. Uh, boy, it was after Labor Day. So we, we had about a month. Um, and with some unpredictable weather and uh, not a lot of opportunity to, uh, to really highlight the business in, in that, in those warmer months. And so uh, it was important for us to meet and just kind of go over what they, what, how they felt the season went and like. Looking at the next year, what we could have some opportunities to improve or what we could do to. Um, further cement what was received really well by the public. Um, I think there was a lot of buzz around that for the people that did know that and it started to gain some momentum. Um, uh, as, as it did that with the, obviously the weather turned sour real quick. And so you lose that momentum. So we're hoping that uh. You know, that they'll be open mid-May and, and we'll, we'll have a really successful summer. Um, with that, we also talked about the possibility of some expansion items, uh, ideas that they had. Um, as they, as they look to the future of the business too, they, again, they were very happy with uh, the results they saw in that first month. And so some, one of the things that they talked about, um, first and foremost was signage. I think that was, you know, was. How do we, how do we make people aware of where we're at? And um, you know, how do we accomplish that as a city? You know, I, I know that our signage, there's, there's definitely parameters that are in place. And so. Things that working with them. And I think that's something that, you know, I just, we put the concept out there, obviously be something that we'd work with. Ross and his department to see how that might work or what some parameters. Might be to, to accomplish that, whether it's sandwich board signs or things of that nature. Um, another request was, and I'm just, I just run through all these. Michelle and Dylan are both on, so I just as an introduction and then I'm sure they can expand on that or maybe even want to add some comments when I'm done. Um, but one of the, one, another idea that they had in terms of advertisement was to possibly put a boat. Um, either at Miller Point Pier with, with some signage on it or um. At the pier adjacent to Buddy's. Uh, you know, I think Miller Point is much more conducive to that. Quite honestly, I do have a little bit of concerns. Um, with the Buddy's Pier. And so that we might look at a different way to accomplish that at that location. Um, simply because that be, pier became so popular this year. I think even if that donut boat was still in place, we saw how that, uh, you know, it was a good, good venture, but it kind of jammed things up there a little bit. So I'd have some concerns. With that particular pier. Um, but in terms of getting advertisement down there, I think there's ways that we can accomplish that as well. The, the biggest thing, um, that was certainly on the list was the liquor license. That's something that, uh, they have certainly expressed interest in. Um, initially our discussions were centered around prepackaged liquor. That they are, you know, beer and that wine, the people that take the, that rent the boats for, for a given amount of time that they could. You know, buy a six pack and take that out, um, while they have the boats out. Um, or if they, you know, they came back to the shore that. Um, as you could see in the illustrations, which are amazing by the way, that they would look to add one more shipping container. And truly define their area that then somebody could have, could consume within that area. Um, I like the idea of defining that area more clearly. It's something that I brought up was, is one of my concerns or one of the things that I learned. Um, this last year is that we have to be careful in what that defined area is. So if there's a use or something that's happening. Um, obviously litigation's always, everybody's going to get sued and I, David knows that really well. Um, but protecting us the best we can, um, so that we're clearly defining what areas are whose and what uses are allowed in each area. Um, so I, you know, I think, uh, ultimately I think they would like, and I'll, I'll let them speak to this, but I think ultimately they, and at some point, whether that's this year or in the future, they would like to potentially explore a full liquor license. Um, at that location. Um. But a, again, for us, it's kind of walking before we run. At least I look, how I look at it as a staff, I do think it would. I personally, as a, as a staff member, I think that we could manage that, especially if we define that area more clearly. Um, allowing, saying it's only allowed within this, these parameters. And that, and all the enforcement lies upon them to make sure that that's managed properly. Um, the, the last thing was, to me was the easiest part of that, and that's the extension. Uh, of the uh, license agreement by one year. Uh, obviously very clearly they lost a year and, and their sincere interest is to be partners with us. And so for us to be able to extend that a year, I think was a, was almost a no brainer. Uh, again, there are, if there's ever a, if there was ever an issue, an issue on their end or on our end, it is a revocable license that we can. Either of us can uh, give due notice and, and there's outs that are built into that. So. I, I brought this forward as a discussion item, uh, because I just, I feel like there was, there's some things that are, you know, it's a little bit outside maybe what we're used to. And I think it'll be good to have that discussion openly before I. Try to put any uh, amendments to that, uh, to the agreement together, uh, working with David. I think that helps us all. So I, with that, I would, I guess turn it over to, to Michelle and Dylan and see if they had anything else to add, or if they wanted to add a recap before we go any further.
Uh, hi, everybody. Thank you for having us on tonight. Um. You know, we were so excited to get started last year and everything was kind of up in the air as far as when our start kind, start date could actually occur. So once we were finally ready to get out there and get everything in the water. It was, it was great. Um, the community was so welcoming and warm and excited. And part of the reason we're coming to you with some desperation for signage. Is that most people would walk down to the end of the Riverwalk and go, oh my goodness, I had no idea you were here. And partly because we showed up late in the season. Partly because we, we did, we didn't have a lot of signage. Um, so we're excited to create more awareness. So that community members can walk down with the intention of knowing they can get out on a kayak or paddleboard or boat. Um, so we're excited about that piece. Um, additionally, the expansion. Uh, we learned as well, wanting to have some tables. People really enjoyed coming down and just wanted to sit. And even if they weren't renting something, they really enjoyed coming down and chatting and sitting and. Um, kind of hanging out in the space, which we really enjoyed because that's what it's for. So. Uh, to have a little bit more of a defined area to allow people to just sit and enjoy the water. And maybe grab a snack or a beverage would, would be wonderful. Um.
Well, uh, me being down there, I would interact with the people walking down and a lot of the input that I would get, you know. Basically people kind of want to give you their ideas and that's kind of how this came up. You know, they would tell me, well, it'd be nice if we could get something to eat down here. It'd be nice if we could get a drink down here. And that kind of kept coming up and up. So, um. Then we started really thinking about it and how we could achieve that. And adding that container with, you know, a defined space and tables. Giving really the community something that, you know, in our mind that they were asking for. Um, you know, really kind of started to make sense. So throwing that around and then, you know, coming up with a rendering, something that would be classy. Uh, changing the colors up a little bit to make everything kind of fit that theme. Um, we spent a lot of time trying to figure out what would work and. Uh, we went back and forth on how the steps would work and, you know, throwing colors and stuff. So to really kind of get it fine tuned. You know, so the rendering is pretty close to what we think, you know, what it would look like.
Yeah. And as, as far as um, the liquor licenses, just to start with some prepackaged, you know, just canned beverages. As a way, so someone, uh, you know, in, in our contacts, our waivers that people sign, you cannot, the driver of a boat cannot drink. So um, that is clear as day and, and pretty bold print on the waiver that is signed. So as part of our insurance as well. So that would not pertain to the drivers of, of the boats, of course. But um, for people to either, you know, when they come back in, have a snack and grab a drink and enjoy. The waterfront area uh, is something that we would love to provide. So. I think that's about it.
If anybody have any questions or concerns?
So I'm going to open up for uh, council discussion. Uh, is there any council members that like to? Uh, speak up, uh, any? Alden Sandy, go ahead.
I, I, I guess I'll, I'll go first. Uh, hi, Michelle. Uh, I was fortunate enough to get out there and um. And, and, and rent, um. Uh, I think a kayak with my daughter, uh, very enjoyable, uh, wonderful staff. I um. Um, how many workdays did you actually have out there last year?
We only.
Operation days, yeah.
Yeah, we had about four and a half to five weeks.
Okay.
I think five weeks total.
Okay. All right. Um, and what's, what were the? Products that were most attractive to the, uh, to the peoples that when they, when they came to visit you or, or looking at renting?
Yeah, kayaks were a big hit. So hands down the kayaks and, and, and the pontoons. Those were our two biggest. Um. Those were our two most popular. So part of the issue was, um, which we're trying to rectify with signage. Is that people would come down and they'd so easily see in front of the container, the big, um. The rack, the rack, I guess, that held the kayaks and the, the, you know, canoes and the paddleboards. So they would see that and the association would be very clear. Oh, these items. But the boats were kind of down a ways. So we are oftentimes it's a, oh, those are yours too. And so we're trying to make that connection much clearer for people as they walk by that, yes, all those boats, you know, those four boats down there. Are ours as well. And we have a lot of different retros we can throw in the mix. And so we have, you know, a, a different pontoon this year. We might put in, we have some woody boats. We could, you know, we have a lot of different options, a really neat retro boat. So we want to make sure people are seeing those boats. And knowing that they are options for them to take out for, for rent.
And, and I, I'm not a big person that likes to put a big sign on a boat because if I was renting a boat. I would not want it plastered with signage. So uh, it, it's hard for me to put. You know, a big for rent on it because it's just not classy to me. So.
Sure. No, that makes sense.
Nice.
Yeah.
I, I, I guess, you know, three things that were brought up from Bill. The, the signage is definitely something I, I think we should. Look into and, and, and see what we can do there, you know, to move forward on, on signage form. Uh, packaged liquors, I, knowing that they have to sign that waiver. In regards to the, uh, to the driver of the boat, especially like on a pontoon where you're going to. Put in, who knows, six, eight, 10 people. Um, uh, I can, I can be comfortable with the packaged liquors and, and definitely want to extend the license, you know. Uh, they had, as Michelle said, four or five weeks. Uh, to kind of get, you know, get their feet wet. Uh, and we can look at. Keep your fingers crossed, get a full season in this year.
Yeah.
Uh, and, and, and maybe, you know, look at increasing some of the other options. Uh, uh, that are placed in, in, in this proposal tonight. Um, because I would. Definitely like to. Look more in depth regards to patio and bar area right there, knowing that there could be some. Concerns with businesses either up and down the Riverwalk with that. Uh, and then I guess it would be more of a staff question too, that. When we have large events and they're running their business there. Um, you know, how much space will be available in regards to if there's, um. You know, uh, you know, if, you know, like the vid, you know, potentially a Venetian night, something like that would. Bring in a lot of people and, you know, you know, would they have space to even have their own area? Because virtually the whole area would be uh, set aside for uh, the public and uh, music that happens and then other, um. You know, like temporary food, food trucks that come in at that time. you know, like temporary food, food trucks that come in at that time and uh, would like to get the thoughts of um, the other uh, aldermen, alderwomen, uh, on the council to, to see what they feel about some of the options. Thank you.
I think I just want to address the one point in terms of the events, because that's a, that is a tricky one that I think we'd have to work together. Uh, I, I really appreciate you bringing up that point because it's a, it's a valid argument when you have a, now Shamrock's the Fox will be too soon. And who knows what's going to exactly happen with that this year. Um, but when you look at a Venetian night in September, you know, who, if we're at that point, if there's a beer tent or something of that longs, along the lines that's happening, I think there needs to be clearly defined who has what and, you know, in terms of if it's our, it's our park, our point, um, what are the hours? It's similar to how we utilize the beach at Peterson Park. When it's Fiesta Days and the beach closes down at some point, we say, all right, you can have, you know, up to six o'clock at night, you, we can cooperate or you, you can operate up to this point and that, and after that, then you need to shut down. You can't take advantage of an event that we're putting on to then have your concessions, even though it's a partnership and we're in this together. I think clearly defining what that timeframe is for some of those events, I think only helps with the, uh, the success of the relationship.
Thank you.
Yeah, no problem at all. Yeah.
I, and real quick, a, a real quick follow-up that uh, makes all the sense in the world, Bill, in regards to the comparison when you have Fiesta Days going on. There's really not much you can do at that beach uh, in regards to rental or even swimming, because usually we'll close up because there's so many people uh, at the, at the event, at the large event. Um, your main location is in Port Barrington, correct?
Um, no, not for the retros. This is a separate entity. Um, our sister like company that we run is Barrington Boat Club, which we also have a location on Bangs Lake. And actually will have a location in McHenry around the Riverwalk behind um, the big red building that houses um, Foxhole Pizza and the apartments there. So, um, that's a separate business.
And then our, our all marine main location is in Cary, actually, where we were Mer Cruiser, Mercury certified fiberglass repair boat sales and all.
Do you do rentals out of the Cary location?
No.
You don't. Okay. But you do rentals on Bangs Lake?
Um, so it's not rentals. It's a membership. So we have just a fleet of boats that only our members have access to and they get to use them all summer.
All right. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Yep.
Uh, Alderman Miller.
Um, I, I would love to see us extend this license and continue to foster a relationship. Um, I think your five week season was so little bitty that um, and it was so well received that I think that it would be a positive thing to move forward. And as far as your renderings on what you are looking to do down on your beach, um, it's a perfect gathering spot. So as people are returning their boats after their three-hour cruise in between the No Wake buoys, which I still am finding um, difficult to fathom, but.
Pontoons get to go out past that.
So um, I think this is a great little place to just decompress and, and hang out for a few minutes. Um, so I think you might get people that just come to hang out. Um, because this looks like a nice little patio space that currently doesn't exist down there uh, outside of a restaurant area. So I like what I see in the renderings and I hope that we continue that conversation and that relationship building. Um, so yeah, I'm all in.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other council members have any input, questions, comments? Uh, Alderman Devine.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I'm good with it as well. I'm not sure about the liquor license this year, but I can go either way on that. Um, good with the extension. Signage is great. Not comfortable with uh, Miller Point Pier. Um, there just isn't enough room down there and uh, I'm not sure about that, but everything else I'm, I'm good with and happy about. So.
The Miller Point here or the Pier by Buddy's or both?
Did I say Miller Point? I meant um, I meant River Place. I'm good with Miller Point, River Place. I'm not sure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments by council? Nope, Alderman Schaefer.
Uh, thanks. Yeah, I just, I think extending it is, is great. It's not a problem. I don't think anybody would have a problem with that. Um, can you, Bill, just what were the hours for the operation again?
I'll, I'll let them tackle that with the, with the unusual fall that we had.
Yeah, our hours are ten to seven. So uh, all the boats need to be in by seven PM. That's just partly preference, partly safety. It's just nice to get things buttoned up before dusk. So um, seven o'clock is when the rentals end. Uh, I don't think at this point in, until we have a definitive approval, have we determined how late we would keep the extension open for people to sit and gather. Um, and, and we would refer to you to as, as well as your suggestions or thoughts on that. But it, we don't, we don't anticipate this being a late night. This is not meant to be a super late hangout. Everyone's at the bar till midnight type of deal. We don't, that's not what we were looking for. It's more to really supplement the people who are walking around on the Riverwalk, who are coming to sit and enjoy the water, who, but you know, after they come back from a rental. So um.
And I, and I guess, you know, I have to see what the public is looking for and what you guys are looking for because.
We're flexible.
Yeah.
Excellent. The uh, in, in the boat rental, the motorboat side of it, you still can only go a certain uh, length and pattern, right? So to speak?
Well, there's two sides of that. So the, the retro rentals that only have like the 10 horsepower nine point nines on them, those we try to tell them to stay within a no wake zone because they're smaller boats and they don't go very fast. Now the pontoon boats, we equipped with brand new Mercury uh, forty horsepower uh, thrust motors. So you know, they'll, they'll do 20 miles an hour or so. So we let them kind of go outside uh, up into the lakes if they like.
And it's still a two hour max or what is the max rental?
No, actually that's just like the, the starting point, right?
Yeah, the, the small little boats typically because it's in the no wake zone, uh, it's about a ninety minute rental, um, which they can extend. And they've had so much fun just kind of cruising along and, um, but the pontoons go two, four, six or eight hours. And we might actually just shift that to four or eight hour rentals, two, four, eight. Um, because everyone wanted it for a longer amount of time. So those went over really well. We had people come in and say, oh, I want to take it all day, you know, and, and they can do, that was great.
And the question I, I hate asking, but did you have any, any issues with any, any problems at all with anybody?
None at all. We only had five short weeks, but we were well, we had a well-trained staff and um, you know, no, everyone was wonderful. And, and I just one of the things that we absolutely want you to hear us say tonight is just thank you because your community is incredible. And we had so many people who had literally walked by almost every day just to say hello. And we're so happy we were there and so many people just um, so excited to see a development down there that they could come and use and and partake in whether they rent from us or not, you know, bring their own kayak and put it in. And so just thank you for that because it was very much appreciated.
Yeah, some of the neighbors actually cooked us some food.
Yeah, they did. Yeah, they've sent us food. They're so sweet. Like, we've really enjoyed them. So.
I live uh, close to the uh, area of the No Wake, so I see a lot of the retro boats and I can tell you that you're exactly right. The people are having a riot when they're out on them. Uh, and uh, although you get a lot of looks from other boaters, I think uh, I think it's all positive. So hopefully that, that can continue and uh, um, yeah, I look, the other thing too, I think you'll be pleasantly surprised about the number of people, at least within town that know about you and about what you've done, even though it's been only a short five weeks. Um, there are a lot of people locally that are very aware of what's, what's down there and are happy to have you there.
Thank you.
Thanks for keeping things pretty down there. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jeff. Uh, any other comments, questions by council? None? All right. Dylan, Michelle, thank you very much. Um, at this point, Bill will be in just, you know, having a conversation with you guys, trying to bring something back. Um, I'm fully supportive of, of what you got going on down there. Uh, absolutely love it. I know we had a conversation last summer or fall um, regarding the liquor. And I think, you know, a small packaged liquor license would be a, a, a pretty cool thing. There was a lot of people just sitting in those seats that weren't even renting boats, which is good. So it just brings more people down to the point, which eventually brings them down to restaurants and uh, so I appreciate everything that you've done. And I know last year was tough, but hopefully this year we can uh, get your boats out there and start renting them like crazy. So.
Yeah. Thank you so much. We really appreciate it, everyone.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Bill, you got anything else?
No, thanks. I, I'll just work with uh, Attorney McCardo. We'll put together, we'll make some amendments to that uh, with the petitioners and we'll, we'll get that in front of you. Hopefully that first week, uh, first meeting in March.
Thank you, Bill. Thank you again, Dylan and Michelle.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
You too. All right. Next item on the agenda is staff reports. Is there any staff reports this evening? Oh, Bill, man, go ahead, Bill.
I know, I know. I just wanted to give an update on Shamrock's the Fox and kind of uh, tell you where we're at um, as the situation is evolving. Um, at this point, you know, I think the, that those first three things were, are still the easiest part of that, and that being the five K. The um, five K, the dying of the river and the open carry. The, the part that we're struggling with right now, quite honestly, and, and don't feel that we're uh, at this point, at least able to provide the safest possible conditions for the event, um, based on previous year's turnout is the parade. Um, like, we don't feel like we can uh, pull that off. Uh, you know, if, if you ask me right now, would we have that? We would not have that portion of it. Um, this, the other portion, the, the Miller Point portion is a, uh, the state has asked us for some additional information on what our plan would be um, for Miller Point, um, before they would even consider issuing a state liquor license, which we need to be able to um, obviously provide alcohol at the point. So we're, we're continuing to work with them. Um, but in terms of an update of what that event may or may not look like, um, the first, the, the five K, the dying of the river and uh, the open carry all seem to be pretty easy. Uh, the parade is probably going to be out. I don't, unless something drastic changes. Uh, I don't see that changing. Um, and we have to provide that plan that the state has to sign off on for the Miller Point portion. I will keep you all updated uh, as soon as anything happens or changes on that. And when I say the Miller Point portion, I, I'm talking about um, amended hours, open, open layout amended hours, the eleven to six on Saturday and the twelve to six on Sunday.
Thank you, Bill. Um, any other staff reports? Uh, I have nothing this evening. Uh, city council comments? See none? All right. I'm looking for a motion and a second to adjourn. Alderman Santee?
I'll make that motion to adjourn.
Thank you. Second? Alderman Miller?
I'll second that motion.
Thank you, sir. Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Santee?
Yes.
Alderman Miller?
Yes.
Alderman Devine?
Yes.
Alderman Mahavec?
Yes.
Alderman Hardy?
Yes.
Alderman Schaefer?
Yes.
Alderman Glab?
Yes.
Mayor Judd?
Yes. Thank you. Everyone have a good evening.
Thank you.
You too. Thank you.
Good night.
You too. Bye.